Thirteenth edition of the Planning Commission meeting. Call to order. Do we have to roll call first?
Yeah.
Okay.
Call to order.
So, roll call. Roll call Commissioner Christian.
Present.
Commissioner Inga.
Here.
And Vice Chair Magai.
Present. And as always, we start with a pledge of allegiance. Field general.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. I am a guy invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so, public communications. There's no one in the audience, so I assume we don't have any speakers on any non-agendized items. First off, the consent calendar. The one and only item on the consent calendar is to approve the January twenty-third Planning Commission meeting minutes. Can I get a motion?
I present a motion to approve the minutes from our last commissioners' meeting.
A second.
Can we take roll?
Yes. Commissioner Christian.
Aye.
Commissioner Inga.
Yes.
And Vice Chair Magai.
Aye. That takes us to public hearings. The first public hearing is an ordinance amending El Segundo Municipal Code Title fifteen, Chapter fifteen, Off-Street Parking and Loading to Update the Parking Requirements for Residential Uses. And I believe we have a presentation today. Hello, Paul.
Good evening, Vice Chair Magai and fellow commissioners. The item before you tonight is Zone Text Amendments, continuing our efforts to implement the city's housing element. As a quick refresher, the housing element has eleven separate programs, but the focus of tonight's presentation is Program Number Nine, Amendments to the Municipal Code. And these amendments are intended to remove barriers and facilitate construction of housing. Program Number Nine specifically calls for amendments in twelve different topic areas. I'm happy to report that we have completed eleven of those amendments, and this item involves the last remaining amendment that we committed to completing in Program Number Nine. This last amendment focuses on multiple-family residential parking requirements. This is what Program Nine states about residential parking rates, and I'll let you read through there as well. The current parking requirement for multifamily residential is two parking spaces per unit, per dwelling, plus one guest space for every three units. Now, the objective of this program is to amend these parking requirements to a sliding scale of parking requirements based on sort of size of the units or number of bedrooms, similar to the Pacific Coast Commons Specific Plan Project, which is referenced in the program language. This is the parking requirement in the PCC Specific Plan. If you recall, you saw this information at your study session last year. Starting with one space for studio units, one and a half spaces for one-bedroom units, two spaces for two-bedroom units. Just for a reference, the Pacific Coast Commons Project involved two-hundred-and-fifty-seven units, broken down into studios, one-bedroom, and two-bedroom units. Now, at your study session last year, we reviewed the city's current parking requirements for multifamily residential uses, if you recall. Also compared them to parking requirements in other cities. Had a discussion, and at the end of the study session, the commission made sort of three determinations. It determined that, yes, just as the housing element calls for a sliding scale, that seems appropriate for the cities, for something to include in our municipal code. The commission directed staff to prepare an ordinance that reflects the same sliding scale parking requirement as in the PCC Specific Plan for all our multifamily residential uses. And also directed staff to study and include an allowance for tandem parking in multifamily residential uses, something that's not permitted today in the municipal code. Just as a refresher, we went over this table at your study session that shows current parking requirements in the city in different zones, specific plans, and overlays. Also went over briefly the requirements of other cities and had a little discussion on the ITE Manual, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, and the parking demand studies that they conduct to kind of study requirements for parking. Since the study session and following your direction, we did a little bit of research on our requirements for tandem parking spaces. So, the table before you shows the requirements in the different zones in the city and specific plans. In the single-family and two-family zones, tandem parking is permitted for each of the units, prohibited for multifamily, the R-three zone. In mixed-use developments pursuant to an administrative determination that we did last year and that the commission reviewed, we apply the PCC Specific Plan regulations also to mixed-use residential uses, which allow twenty percent of the required parking spaces to be in tandem configuration. Mixed-use overlay, the same requirement or allowance. The housing overlay adopted last year prohibits tandem parking. And the downtown specific plan, which was adopted just last year, allows up to a hundred percent of required spaces to be in tandem configuration. We also looked at the requirements in other cities, and we found that there was no general trends among the different cities. Things, the results varied widely. Some cities completely prohibiting tandem parking for multifamily uses. Some of them allowing a range between maybe twenty percent all the way up to a hundred percent. So, based on that research that we did and our experience dealing with tandem parking, staff drafted an ordinance that allows twenty percent of the required resident parking to be in tandem configuration. We believe that this allows for flexibility in the design. It facilitates housing construction consistent with the housing element goals, and it provides some consistency in the regulations, because twenty percent is sort of a standard in other zones in the city and for other uses. The ordinance includes certain restrictions for tandem parking to minimize any unanticipated impact, such as, you know, non-use of the tandem parking or parking spillover. Those restrictions, which are common in other zones and for other uses, limit the maximum depth of tandem spaces to two spaces and require that tandem space pairs are assigned to the same residential unit. With that, we recommend that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution to recommend City Council adoption of an ordinance amending the municipal code's residential parking requirements. That completes my presentation. I'll be happy to take questions.
I'll open up for Commissioner questions for staff.
Paul, do we, do we know, do we have any idea how many non-commercial vehicles are registered with the N-90245?
Non-commercial vehicles registered? No, we don't have those numbers. How many residential?
Correct.
Or non-commercial vehicles in the city now?
Okay, so, do I need to open for public comment? Is that?
If you have no other questions on the reports at this point, yeah.
Okay, and I'd like to open up for public comment. It does not appear that we have any commenter, so we'll close public comments. All comments will now be just from the dais. I think that, I think this is very straightforward. I think it's a good thing. I'm surprised that tandem parking wasn't allowed. I think that's a good strategy to have if we're, you know, trying to find parking or trying to, you know, maximize the space for parking. But, yeah, this is all in line with what we've wanted to do to encourage housing to remove barriers. So, I think this is a good, a good resolution. Other thoughts? Okay, well, without, if there's no other comments, would anyone like to move to adopt the resolution?
I present a motion to adopt Resolution two-nine-five-four, recommending City Council to adopt an ordinance amending the El Segundo Municipal Code Parking Requirements for Residential Uses.
And do we have a second?
A second.
Shall we take roll?
Yes. Commissioner Christian.
Aye.
Commissioner Inga.
Yes.
And Vice Chair, I'm sorry, Magai.
Aye.
Motion passed three-zero.
Okay, that takes us to the next public hearing. An ordinance amending El Segundo Municipal Code Title fifteen, Chapter thirty-four, Cultural Development Regarding Requirement to Provide Artwork or Pay in Lue Fee.
No, there's no, there's no presentation.
And do we have a presentation for this?
Just a verbal, more of a verbal presentation. It's pretty straightforward. As the commission may know or realize, since two thousand and nineteen, the city's had a Art in Public Places fee through the city or providing public art on property. Whenever the redevelopment and the valuation of the redevelopment is at least two million dollars, the, they need to then pay a fee that is one percent of the total valuation. So, it's whether, whether this particular, a particular project came before the Planning Commission or if it was just gone, went through plan check. We've had this fee established and on these development projects. So, back in late two thousand and twenty-four, the City Council had directed staff to provide them with some information regarding the cultural development program funding and information on similar programs that are, that other municipalities and other cities do nearby. Last month, staff presented that information to them, and as a result of that, the council directed staff to do three things with the current ordinance, which is to update it to include the ability to split the funding, meaning that right now, currently, the ordinance requires that the, that one percent payment or that one percent be either a payment or a actual public art. So, this, this proposed ordinance would allow developer to split that, whereby if, for example, the, the public art fee was five hundred thousand, they could provide two hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards the funding and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of art. So, it gives a little bit more flexibility to, 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 to an applicant. The second thing that was, that was proposed or directed by the council was to cap that CDP fee to a million dollars. So, even if the, that, the, that one percent equates to something greater than, it would be capped at a million dollars. And then the third thing, the, the third item that, that was required or directed to staff was to update the timing when that in-lue payment is made. So, that is reflected in the proposed ordinance. So, with that, that concludes my presentation.
Okay, so, a couple of questions from me. Do we have a list of projects and what they have contributed, like a total dollar amount? Or, you know, what public art they've put up?
Yeah. Anecdotally, we'll be able to respond. Let me dig through my email, because I do have a list of sorts over the last couple of years, but give me a moment to look that up and then I'll get back to you in a second.
Well, I don't need to see the list now. I'm just wondering if one, one exists, if somebody wants to go look in and see what?
But I can give you sort of dollar amounts too, over, since two thousand and nineteen, what we've kind of collected, if that was useful to you, if you wanted to know.
Okay, and then do we have a, like a map of where some of the public art is? So, maybe, I don't know, the Cultural Development Subcommittee or if they could put one together to have like a walking tour, somebody wanted to do a walking tour of public art?
Yeah, we can, we can, we can check with, with Cultural Development Staff to see if they've done that or have, or have something similar to that. I know that there is a, an old one that was, it's quite dated, but we could see if they have something more recent, report back on that.
Okay, and then is the, is the pay-in-lue, are there requirements on how that money can be spent? Or, okay, can you describe what those requirements are?
You know, a lot, go ahead.
So, the ordinance also created a, what they call a Cultural Development Fund. So, it's those funds that are limited to programming relative to a list of items, but if the city wanted to procure its own artists, I think like the R. For the Plunge, that could be used for that. It's used for certain city cultural events, but it's limited to art-related items that are programmed by the city, and it's restricted in that Cultural Development Fund.
Okay. I think my question was sort of, City Council suggested that we put a cap on the fee? Was that their thought process?
Correct.
Okay. We're also amending it to provide a slight, like, they can either provide art or provide the cash, up to a million dollars. At whose discretion is it to determine the value of the art that they provide that we would then somehow be coming up with the, with the cash for the difference?
So, that is something that the applicant coordinates with our Cultural Development Staff and with the Cultural Development Arts Committee. So, and that's composed of, I believe, seven or nine different members of the community. So, they would act, and I think a lot of them do have some background in, in, you know, in some sort of art. So, yeah, so it goes before them, and they will go ahead and see the valuation and whatnot, make that call.
Okay, and it's not a, again, it's not a fifty-fifty split. It's like if they come up with a ten thousand dollar sculpture, they can come up with a nine hundred and ninety thousand in cash and offset it with a ten thousand dollar sculpture.
Right now, the way the ordinance is currently written, they need to do one or the other.
Yeah, no, I'm talking about the way we were proposing to amend it.
Exactly, so if, for example, if, if, if the, the, a fee would ever reach a million, I don't know if it has ever reached a million, but let's say it does. In this example, then yes, they could do a ten thousand dollar sculpture and nine ninety in cash or vice versa.
Does the city retain any sort of discretion over what art we would accept in lieu of the fee? Like, can we reject it?
I don't know how much discretion the committee has, but there is, it does go before them.
Okay.
And there, there are certain parameters in these guidelines called Cultural Development Guidelines that were required to be adopted after the Art in Public Places ordinance was adopted. So, there are parameters in there, and then through the ACC's vetting process, they must apply, go through the ACC, get approval to ensure that, you know, the artist is legit and the art really comports with the parameters of the guidelines.
Okay. So, it's, so there's a feedback or an approval loop that the proposed art would need to go through, that we would have to accept bef, before, you know, instead of taking?
I mean, it's not sort of a unilateral cram down. There are instances where there is pushback, and it's like, well, you know, let's, you know, maybe do it this way, or it also has to be publicly accessible, so what is the location for it to ensure there is public access? So, there is kind of a give and take there.
Okay.
So, the committee does have input on where the art will be located?
Yeah, yeah, so it's part of the proposal, sort of like, is it a sculpture? Is it a painting? What kind of art? You know, what's the medium and then the location? So, that's all baked into the application process that goes to the ACC that they consider for approval or modification or denial.
And that public place doesn't necessarily have to be located or attached to wherever that development is? It could be anywhere. We could put, we could put our, our here.
It necessarily needs to be on site. If the city, alternatively, with funds that have come from the in-lue fee into the Cultural Development Fund, wants to put a mural or a sculpture somewhere on city property, that's, that would look a little different, yeah.
Okay.
So, the, back, back to the cap, so I mean, it would be a hundred million dollar project, right, to get to a million dollars? I think that that's, I mean, those are the people that I think we would want, that have the pockets to go over that. I don't know why we would actually need that cap. If, can we amend it? I mean, the council recommended, but can we put in a provision that it can be negotiated somehow?
Yeah, the commission can make any recommendations tonight. These three items were deliberated at council. The cap was introduced by one of the council members based on conversations that happened in two thousand and nineteen, and there was a recollection of a desired cap in two thousand and nineteen, which ultimately did not wind up in the ordinance, and so they brought that back up. Council decided, yes, let's reintroduce a cap. But the, the commission can make any recommended changes to this ordinance, and then, of course, council will consider those recommendations and then make their decision.
I mean, I'm not disposed to necessarily fight this one, since it kind of came from them. It did make me question, that was my first question, that's a big project, why would we cap on it? And wouldn't that money go into the pool of potential art? Why would we limit it? But I don't know how many hundred million dollar projects come up where this is an issue. Like, I, I guess, without knowing, without, without being privy to the, the council's thought process there, it's hard to know, like, is there an experience where we've had a large project be, it become a sticking point that there's this big fee, and it could be one point one million, and somebody was like, gosh, I wish it could be lower, and we couldn't find another way to work around it?
Yeah, the...
Like a waiver or something to?
Concern, I think, comes through, comes through a perspective that if the fee is too high, it may disincentivize development. A million dollars is a heavy cost to carry when you're financing a construction project, and so I think there's concern that those types of things might discourage some development. But for, for context, one, you're, you're absolutely right. The, the city doesn't see very many, if anything, if any, since this program's been adopted, any projects of that scale. The closest we've probably come to it is the Chargers project, which was about a seventy million dollar project. If you look at the paper, they said it was a two hundred million dollar project, but that factors in technology and a lot of things that don't go into the building valuation. But the building valuation was about seventy million dollars, and so just for scale, you're looking at something at least twice that size or that, you know, scale of a project.
And the Chargers, that check, they paid the seven hundred thousand?
The Chargers, they paid, they paid the fee.
Oh, they did.
They did.
That's what I mean, so they paid the fee, they paid seven hundred grand?
Yeah.
Yeah. Because then we get to control it, right? The city gets to decide what projects to make and where to make them and what the medium is and our discretion of our committees and?
Yeah, so annually, the, the committee or the, the commission annually makes a presentation to City Council on how to program the funds every year, including potentially staff time, but also things like the Art Walk and those types of events are funded through the program. Their wonderful new sign on the corner of Main Street and Imperial. They, they make those recommendations annually to, to City Council, who then ratifies it.
Am I allowed to ask if the council person who brought it up in two thousand and nineteen is still on council? Would that make a difference?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. There was a public discussion a couple of months ago. The now mayor, Chris Pimentel, had raised the question because he recalled that it was discussed in two thousand and nineteen and couldn't remember why it was not included originally. So, that, it, it came back up, and there was desire to introduce a cap. There was deliberation on the... Um, so that, it, it, it came back up and there was desire to introduce a cap, there was deliberation on the amount of the cap. Um, there was. Uh, there was an initial recommend, do you remember, Joaquin, there was an initial recommendation for a much lower cap.
Five hundred thousand, if not less.
And there was not consensus to do a lower cap. And so the mayor suggested a higher cap at a million, just to start, just to put something on the board, uh, which, which received consensus.
Can, can we say that the highest payment that we would have to be, that would have to go one million? And any shortfall can be negotiated thereafter? So that the, the biggest check that they can write is a million dollars. And then if, if at that time, we say, well, that's enough, then that's enough, but if we say that's not enough, we can ask for artwork at that point.
So the, so the, let, let me clarify, just make sure I understand your, you correctly. Let's say it's a, a two hundred million dollar project, right? The first million is capped at cash, but the second million has to be some sort of negotiated artwork or something like that.
And that could be no more artwork, if they have other stuff that's good enough within their facility or what have you, I mean, it could be. We could negotiate to the full two million or we can negotiate nothing.
Yeah.
In addition.
Uh, yeah, I mean, you could rec, you could make any recommendation, so if you wanted to structure something like that, it would be helpful to know. What those parameters are above the cap that, that would be negotiated or at least that would be part of the review from the, the. The committee or commission that reviews these, um, that, and that way we can sort of spell it out in the ordinance.
And, and I guess just spitballing with that consideration. Given the, the separate component where we're commingling, so to speak, the, the fee and the art, where there's that sliding scale. If I'm a developer for this project, I would say, well, I mean, you're getting the full one million, so why?
I guess a one percent is more than the one million.
Yeah, yeah, I see.
It's an interesting needle to try to thread, I'm not sure how you would present that either to a developer, but. Um, I don't know. To your point, I, I guess the, I guess for me at least, there is, I'm missing the context of the size of the fund. And like how much more, you know, if, if, if the cap is a million, what would that look like? For, in a typical year for that fund, would that be like double and it'd be this big? Windfall for the fund or is it a drop in a bucket, like, I don't know.
Every, every year since two thousand nineteen, we don't have a lot of years to go back to be able to really project out, but since two thousand nineteen. There's been years where we collect twenty eight thousand and then there's years that we collect one point nine million. So averaging that out over the last five years is a little, little, or six years now is a little tough. But on average, they have budgeted and allocated essentially about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. In operating, meaning expected fee receipt and, and oper, you know, programming, funding and things like that. So it's, uh, that's where they've landed.
Okay.
In the last several years, but again, there's years where there's a couple thousand bucks and there's years where there's, you know, large projects.
What do we do when it's, where does the money come from? If in the year where we only got twenty eight thousand dollars from the in lieu. Where did the rest of the money come from, the general?
Yeah, so there's a, there's a fund balance, so there's a dedicated account that the, the in lieu fee sits in. That sustains or supports any future years' operating expenses. So in the year that only twenty eight thousand dollars were received, the fund balance was you, if, and I don't know what the budget was that year. But if three hundred and fifty thousand dollars was the cost of the programming, the staff time, all that, it came from the fund balance. That's part of the consideration, every time council approves the operating budget for this program. One of the things they consider is that fund balance and projected projects in the pipeline.
So right now, the, the cap that's being proposed is like three years of typical operating budget for the fund.
Is that fund part of the general fund or the annual general fund or that's a different fund?
Uh, the, the fund balances, well, it's a, it's a different fund, but ultimately it's part of the, you know, it's the city's general fund. But it is a separate account. But it's invested along with the city's general sort of investment strategy and life accounts.
Okay.
It's just a dedicated funding source, a set aside funds.
I guess when it comes down to it, if the charter facility was seventy million, they still paid seven hundred thousand dollars.
Sure.
And it's a one point, or one hundred and two, twenty million dollar project, like, we're not missing out on, on, on that much. So, yeah, I think, uh, for me, I'm, I'm, I'm not going to die on this hill.
Yeah.
But it's, it is interesting that we would have a, a cap. I guess the only way we would be kicking ourselves if we had a two hundred million dollar project pop up, so.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not going to fight it either, I, I just, in my mind, that's, that's a place where you negotiate, right? You'd say, oh, you know, let's, like, you know, it's supposed to be two, two million, let's make it a million a quarter and we come out ahead. But, um, or we give a waiver or something like that, where it would come to, you know, either come to us or come to the council. And we, they would ask for a waiver and we would, given our current climate, I'm sure we would grant it, right?
Yeah.
But, you know, maybe we save everybody the headache and let the cap be a million for now and, and maybe have this debate. Another time when there's like a really big project, we wish we got more art money.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So, I, I don't have any other questions. Um, so I guess we opened up for public comment at this point, um, we do not have any public comment. Um, would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion, I'll make a motion to.
Sorry, you just need also close the public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You opened the public comment, now you need to close it.
Oh, sorry, I, I'd like to close public comment on this item. And now, do we have a motion?
Uh, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution, uh, two nine six one.
I second.
Um, Commissioner, um, Christian?
Aye.
Commissioner Inga?
Aye.
And Vice Chair Magai.
Aye.
Motion pass three zero.
Okay, new business, the fun one, election of planning commission chair and vice chair for calendar year twenty twenty-five. So just to start with discussion. Um, how does this work?
Well, I, I mean, as you know, the, the commission has been, uh, slowly being chipped, chipped away. Uh, the last, uh, uh, this current vacancy was left by, uh, uh, then Chair Jay Hashler. Who's served a whopping two, two meetings as, as chair. Uh, so now that there's three, uh, we have, uh, uh, we're in the need to officially have a chair and a vice chair. To move forward. So you could either do it by self nomination or you can nominate someone else and then the rest of the group will vote on that.
I, I will nominate myself.
I was gonna, I had a speech prepared. Just kidding, let's go.
I second that.
Okay, so we have, uh. Self nomination by Kevin, signed by, by, by Commissioner Inga, so we'll just take role.
Commissioner Christian?
Aye.
Commissioner Inga?
Yes.
And of course Vice Chair Magai.
Aye.
Now Chair.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And with that vacancy leaves, or with that promotion gives the vacancy for vice chair, so again, same thing.
I would like to nominate Mario Inga for vice chair.
I will second that.
Commissioner Christian?
Aye.
And Comis, well now Vice Chair Inga?
Aye.
And Chair Magai.
Aye.
Perfect, thank you, so now we have official chair and vice chair and, uh, we'll move forward with your, uh, respective, uh. Placks.
Um, unfinished business, we have none, reports from community development director?
Nothing from myself, Eduardo?
No, nothing from, nothing from C D D.
Um, if I could ask, uh, how the process is going, the selection process is going for the next chairs?
Uh, yeah, so the application window is still open for the next, um, week and a half or two. So if you have anybody, you know, that you think might be interested or be a good fit, uh, the window is quickly closing. Um, but before the end of this month, uh, the city manager's office staff will schedule interviews likely in March. Depending on the availability of council, uh, for the new planning commissioners. But the window's closing in the next two weeks, so I, you know anybody, tell them to get their applications in.
Do we have a sense of the pool?
I, I don't, uh, last I asked, I think there were three or four applications in, but that was.
Actually, I just inquired, yeah, I, I think she told me there was seven.
Oh, wow, okay, great.
All right, so here you go. All right, I love it. Great.
For the sake of setting records, please don't step down. We don't need any new records set.
Um, this just may be for my own information. Um, so the city of El Segundo is, uh, part of the western cities and they voted on the representative for the south coast AQMD. Do you know the results of that? Okay.
I can, we can, we can find out.
Okay, uh, sounds good, uh, Joaquin, do you have anything to report?
Not this time, thank you Chair.
Oh, and I forgot, uh, any commissioners, do you have anything to report this time?
None.
No. All right, I think that that runs our agenda and concludes our meeting. Meeting is adjourned.